The sound's been off.
I don't know what he said, you know, when I first came in, it looked like it was on and I turned it off. And it's like that's why I just wish he had called me on my cell phone, just to tell me what was going on. Uh, yeah, then he uh, go, you know.
Well, six twenty one, COVID borders, left many need to our June second. Um, and if everybody can stand for the question. Pleasure to be just to fly from the United States of America. There is your public who is the stands, the congregation, I'm on God and the physical, with the justice. Do we need to vote, did I need to share, cause I don't think we did it, Nancy, right? Yes, okay. Which one's bigger?
Any more speaking?
Oh, yeah. One second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Um, unanimous, but thank you. Well, I, I guess I did call for the vote, I took the meeting motion and I took the second and I just accepted.
The nominee, Charlie said he didn't vote for.
So I figured just, Charlie thought so.
No, no, no. Absolutely, no, thank you. Uh, no, no discussion, I didn't have.
And we have warrants to approve, um, and someone who didn't pay the warrant, who aren't, uh, sure, there are big motion on that place.
Okay. Uh, payroll warrant, W fourteen dash forty eight, for a total of one hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty four and nine cents.
One second, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I understand that payroll.
Bill Warren, B W fourteen dash four seven, for a total of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen cents. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. The last one is deduction warrant, D W fourteen dash forty six A, for a total of twenty five thousand, one hundred and seventy nine and sixty six cents. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, crap, crappy, it's crap, I mean, I don't believe we already did this time. And Denise, did you have time to write before this time?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up today that a lot of things going on, um, so just so you know, our preliminary audit is beginning this month, uh, on the sixteenth. We will have the auditors here for one week to start their audit for fiscal fourteen. They'll be back in the fall to finish it up, but just so you know, that is beginning this month. Um, the second item, just to make you aware, uh, which I'm sure you may know by now, um, we have asked Groveland Public Access to expand coverage of as many boards and committee meetings as they can each month. Trying to get more than obviously just the selectmen and zoning and planning on camera. Um, there's still some opposition out there that we're working on, um, but we will do our best to get as much coverage of public meetings as possible. Um, we have.
Clarification, we. Is it, is it, are the, are the board selection making a little bit of?
No, I, I asked Charlie to start attending, Nancy and I talked about it, we asked, um, to start attending some meetings.
Well, you don't know, we haven't been here, but I've got to be close to my heart for a long time, so thank you for that, thank you.
Well, I think it's important that, um, you know, the public see that meetings that are taking place and those that they're voted for, um, so we'd like to expand that coverage.
And just for the public's awareness, also, you made a pretty significant investment, I'm putting all our equipment.
Yes.
Microphones, to drop mics, to spread mics, to cameras, computers, so that's exciting. Why does it take so much to, you have to get a vote or whatever, why? You know, you have opposition, but why wouldn't it be that they could do it?
Well, it's actually, um, we have the ability, Groveland Public Access has the ability under the open meeting law to record any meeting.
Right.
Uh, it's just, it's a change that some boards and committees aren't used to, um, so they are trying to find ways around that. So I actually spoke with a committee member today and I told him I will reach out to the attorney general for actual written ruling if they don't appreciate the open meeting law. So I will do that, he voiced his concern and I told him I would call and get a written ruling.
So any serious opposition realistically can simply be put to rest because they're compelled by law to have their needs publicized.
Yes, in this instance, they're concerned of a space issue, that they don't have a room big enough to accommodate. Um, I informed them they should find a larger space to accommodate the public as well as a camera. Um, they don't seem very willing to do that, but we'll, we'll work on it.
Cause that would be a far greater concern.
Um, let all these boards and commissions and committees know that we are to be bound to allow the public to view all meetings. And the public can attend any meeting in town should they decide to correct, correct unless it's exempted session, and there would be a reason in the law to tell them what they can't do. Now, I did get a call and somebody did ask me about, um, the, what, what the film in town was about, so I wasn't quite sure, cause I didn't have all the details.
Yes, I, I went through the list, Nancy provided the emails, I didn't have for every, at least one representative for every board and committee. Um, I sent them the open meeting law, I wrote, um, the actual, I highlighted the section that says, um, any person is allowed to videotape as long as they make known to the chairman, they can't film and cry, you know, in secret, but as long as they make know that they're filming, um, they do have the right to do so.
And all doors should be unlocked, correct?
And there should be room for the public to attend such meeting.
I think, but our middle meeting room is pretty bad.
And you know, the space at the library, the space at the police station, it doesn't have to be town hall, there are other public meetings.
I mean, I think.
Sure.
Maybe they got to move their meetings into that room.
I suggested that, they weren't very willing to hear that either.
Conservation, I think, needs a piece of art, and I don't know how that works in the public, do you think they should be here, this building?
I'll be, I would like to see all meetings in this building or in this facility area, um.
Well, this is where the concentration of very significant investment is on new equipment, so we can't trace it out, they need to comply with.
Well, the problem is though, which was pointed out, is some of these committees, most of the committees are elected, um, there is, they don't answer to anybody but the residents. So unless the residents sort of encourage them to meet in a more public location, they don't have to comply, they have to comply with the open meeting law, but they don't have to comply with moving their meeting here.
Right.
Um, but like I said, I will get a written opinion from the attorney general regarding their space and their.
Send it off to all, send it off to all the boards.
I would think that.
Yeah, I think that's all the boards.
No one can say they, they have.
I think we can take a vote tomorrow, who's on the board, so we all back, I'm on board, I'll make that move. Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion that we, uh, support the, um, filming of the public access in all meetings in, in town? Aye. Uh, second.
So I'll see.
Aye, correct, no discussion.
So you have the single selected, thank you. You know, as long as you get the. For a inch of attorney general, as long as you get the question.
Um, so also along that, um, line, and Joe, as you were speaking about the investment we're making into the technology regarding cable. A question has come up that I just want to pose to the board to get you to start thinking, um, next year there will be five members of the board. And it was mentioned to me that the board was planning to move to the middle room as your main meeting room. I was a little surprised, I thought we would just sort of fix this room before we start changing the cameras in here, I just, you'll need to make a decision rather soon before we start installing and changing cameras on it. This should remain even here, that would be interesting. Well, I don't know if it was anything official or if it was just sort of.
It actually, it actually was official, um, it, it's embedded in the cable committee minutes somewhere, which I intend to be, to be discussed. Equipment and how to plan meetings, and I certainly advocated, and I wasn't alone with the concept of bringing board selection meeting into the larger room, cause it's visually more appealing. It's friendlier, when people come in, we don't have this barrier, and there's also, and I can't verify this, but there's good technical reasons why that would be a better room anyways for sound and concentration of equipment and the computers and so forth. So I will again advocate for board selection to work to be in a larger room. You know, I think it's a, it's a studio. What do you think, Tracy?
Well, all, all the kinds of, I work for the board of selectmen, so, so it's, it's at the board's decision whether they want here or there.
I'm not saying it's far as the video and the, and the, and the noise.
It, it'll, it'll depend on if the board decides they want to meet in this room, we'll have to add more cameras to what we had originally designed in the proposal, cause originally we respect the, the, this out. It was basically for redesign for what we already have, four cameras in here, gently we can one camera on each one of the board of selectmen, and we have one camera, uh, for the crowd.
Can you still do that with a five member board?
Well, in this room, we would have to, uh, talk to our vendor before the installation to add.
If I may, so we did meet with the, um, vendors on Thursday, the cameras that they're putting in all both locations have an actually much wider, um, view. So we were actually gonna just reposition the cameras in this room, um, there would be two, I think two on this wall and one there and one over here would cover the whole room. And by keeping the one in the middle, they said it would actually maintain a full, um, view of the board.
I will have to, you know, just, you know, I'm Tracy, I'll, I'll, I'll share the, the cable, so I'll, I'll be working with you on that.
Yes.
Since, since I've been involved for so many years, I will want to talk to you in very detail before those installations are. Correct me if I'm wrong, I, from my recollection also is that we actually voted on that issue specifically about bringing that meeting.
Well, again, the, the way I see it is, is the cable committee works for the board of selectmen basically, you know, so, so whoever the chair is of the board of selectmen or for the selectmen.
Vote it on as a recommendation, as a recommendation, yes.
So would you clarify that, just that we, and some people might think of the board select.
Yeah, see, the cable, of which I was a member also, right, so. My question would be, how much, how much would it be to set that room up for us, this room would be up?
Well, that room is being redesigned as well with six cameras in total, it's just before we spend money to reposition the cameras here, I would just like you to think about it and make a decision, because we wouldn't spend as much focus in this room if it wasn't going to be your main meeting room.
And if, if the specifications were specifically configured with the plan to bring board selection meeting, a lot of cables, it's, it's, that is a studio. And the worst doing it came up from the technical guys on the board.
Well, they are doing the exact same setup in both rooms, so the same desk, the same, um, station with the cable, there'll be two duplicate stations in each room or both rooms, it's just a matter of the cameras being positioned.
Does each news, like, would you have a narrow dashboard, doesn't matter?
Probably have to do a way with the.
On the, on the table. One, couple would matter if you were there.
So it's something to think of, they plan to install sometime in July, so I just need a decision.
That, you know, we are short our space for people meeting, you know, baseball comes in, and soccer comes in, and, you know, people use all these rooms, and council and aging room is the middle one probably more than, would you agree that during the day? Um, I don't want to displace anybody. Uh, and if there's gonna be too more people trying to destroy it, um, we may have to have that long people in here, I, I, as you're saying, something to think about, and it given us a heads up, like, cause we're doing that. I didn't know the cable commission committee had received all this new equipment.
Well, we've specced out for new equipment, cause the, the life of this equipment, as you know, we've had multiple problems over the last four years, so it's at the end of its life, so we need to speck out new equipment.
Could you tell us what the cost is, just so that.
I, I, I don't remember what the equipment, do you remember?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I said, so I signed a contract with each week communications.
Around a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars investment, it was already voted on in the rule. Yes.
So, you know, we just, again, I'm gonna advocate strongly on this one, just invest in a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars.
But again, that the both rooms will be set up, so yeah, video.
Availability.
You know, both rooms will be able to, so if one, one room goes live, somebody else will be opening up, tape another meeting in the other room.
But I don't think, I don't think it's gonna drag, having five selectmen, you're gonna drag more people in. Having five selectmen, it might, it might, I think it might, I think the dynamics of a board, and I can speak with experience, I've been on a larger board, we, we had to go into bigger space, uh, with the school committee. Uh, we had nine members, it was originally twelve, and we, you know, changed the space, uh, and, and just visually, that room is perfect, the green, and one of the talent, for this, it's professional, it's in clean, it's warm. You're gonna put out more seats, more people will come, I really believe that, it'll be five members, and also implement some policies in the next several months, and make our talent, not, not talent, but, you know, public participation in meetings a little bit more friendly. I hate to do that.
I've always thought you were.
I can't believe you spent all that money that's still going to the school.
Something for you, you know, I, I think we ought to think about it, we have given us lots to think about, and, uh, Tracy told us about, um, you know, three dollar amount and things you can have.
Just like, you know, you know, Charlie's gonna be doing another meeting over in the middle meeting room, the library is meeting there tonight, so our next meeting is gonna be June sixteenth, we have to vote that night, because they're gonna need to go by July, and that's great, very good idea. A, a two meeting room is a great idea, let's think about it over two weeks, and then go ahead with the decision, thank you, but it's gonna go down June sixteenth, because they need to know, right?
Yes, they need to know July, for July. Great.
Is it gonna, is it gonna distort anyone that's already using that room on Monday night?
Well, that's, that's, is it not invited to that room?
It's a tactic, right?
Um, one Monday night specifically, no, but one thing we could think about is getting that divided, again, what needs to have a couple part in that room, making it into two meeting rooms.
We're gonna do that again. Um, if you did that though, I don't think you could record both, you'd be using the same cameras.
Yes.
So you could do a portable camera on one side of the wall, but you couldn't, you couldn't record both of them, too many.
Alright.
But you wanna look at the expense of doing this room, you're not gonna use it, you know, baseball, we coming in on a Thursday night, quickly, it's not gonna have a child, somebody come out, like.
And we could keep the cameras, we would just keep them in the same spot instead of hanging to rewire them, we would just put the new cameras and equipment, and it could stay a meeting room, um, or we would think in storage, cause we're so short on storage here. Um, but, you know, we can still use it as a functional meeting room if we, if we decide to.
All for storage. I think, I think you know where I'm coming from, thank you for that, Ben, thank you for that, uh, idea, we'll have it, we'll have it decided on the sixteenth, I guess.
It's, uh, that's one different feature, thank you. Uh, I go to you, just for.
Yes, I'm just gonna move over.
Six thirty, we saw the regulations, the committee needs to discuss Groveland Day, and decisions on special event guidelines, checklist, locals, maybe. Okay, who's, who's the spokesperson? Well, I guess the checklist needs clarification, they could ask, okay, what would you like to talk about?
Well, if it's, if we saw this sort of needed for every event, we know events. For, for Groveland Day, John, the day, yeah. If you require sixteen police officers, it's financially not feasible, but we don't have that many police officers.
No, we don't.
Um, um, where we worked out with the police before, we do what they want, we have their number, two, they're buying.
Last year, when I came to Groveland Day, I think in April, when I went down there, you know, right that.
If we had the line from.
That patrol, stuff would come down. One that was in town, patrolling the streets, she came down, so I remember, I remember Dwight, and Steve Sargent, and I think, yeah, officer forecast, he showed up during.
Because he would come down on patrol, so. Um, the price they were, what if the other town events, it's requiring, we talk for a baby shower, sixteen people, I mean, it's.
Sixteen people would be.
I mean, well, it says, I'm gonna.
One hundred.
I mean, you're just, I mean, we can understand if you have events where there are alcohol, obviously there should be some type of police presence that is not disagreeable, however, church, so.
To have, church doesn't have, you're not a church, oh.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, I mean, you're talking like, you know, to have yard sale at the church, you know, have them have, have the police details, I mean, at the, I mean, it's, it's not, it wouldn't be feasible. For non-alcoholic events.
I think sixteen is. We can't do it, we wouldn't do it.
Not at the level of five to six grand.
Yeah. Plus, I, I don't think we'd like sixteen people, chairs or whatever.
Yeah.
And we have to be, uh, so I guess that's the, cause the policy as it's written right now, states any event with, with a special permit, so technically even sporting events are included, cause we have a special permit for those. We would build for a case that should.
Just, just so we're on the same page, I, I, as you know, I work closely with the police on a lot of things, to put it aside, um, I didn't speak to Dwight, he was on vacation for a couple weeks, I haven't been to see him lately, but I have spoken to, you know, the sergeant. And they were under the impression that this was, that they were speaking on the alcohol side of things, which is totally understandable, when we talked about, like, last meeting.
We have two different issues here.
Yeah.
An event with alcohol and an event with large numbers.
That's, that's the key. And I think that's the case that we, that we wanna make sure it's broken off like that inside of this guidelines. Um, and I, I, you know, like I said, I, I've spoken to him, but it's coming from me, so I would love for you to have, they, they were gonna try to come tonight, but I, they weren't sure if they could based off of their.
It's a great idea. My position is that the, uh, the guidelines have to be met to the letter, except if you have an authority that is part of the process, in other words, the police. The written plan that says we can make it work with less than sixteen people, for example, I would say that that would be something we can vote on, except.
No, Joe, you, you need to remove it.
But if you have a baby shower.
For, for non-alcoholic events, you need, but I, I can understand for alcohol, you just, you need to remove for, for anything that's not alcoholic, because I'll tell you right now, you'd be pulling me as a youth soccer program that has over a hundred kids on the field. I, I'm, I'm technically required by that new rule to have two police officers, and you're foolish if you think that I'm gonna have two police officers from nine o'clock in the morning till four o'clock at night.
What are you suggesting that?
Is.
Four?
No, we just.
If, if over a hundred people, that would be two cops starting the game.
Alcohol. I mean, alcohol, not, not alcohol.
Yeah, forget, just.
For Groveland Day itself, it works fine with the amount of police officers that we had last time, there was no issues, never is.
Last year. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Why, why are we getting involved in talking about police officers when we should have the chief come in? The chief should say how many police officers he thinks it needs.
Because the common guidelines are written right now.
I understand, I wasn't here for the guidelines, so I'm just trying to, maybe the chief would be the one that would say, okay, Groveland Day needs four, baby shower, you know, he's the, he's the chief, we hired him to be the chief of Groveland.
Just, just so you know, last, last, uh, last November, we came in and both Dwight and the other sergeant were here, and they actually agreed that we needed to increase the police force, but they said to four, at that meeting, in writing.
And that was at night.
On verbal response, that night, so we thought we were all set, and that was just for the nighttime, the daytime went well, we, like, the road race, we had the road race last year, that went well, but according to the road race, I would need eight police officers based off of that. And that's, so eight, eight cops, I'm trying to donate money to, to programs, not, not to youth programs either, like last year we did Wounded Warrior, I can't donate any money if I'm actually taking a deficit.
Denise, is the interpretation of that special events directive, we have the authority to make decisions on that, is that correct, the board of selectmen?
On the checklist policy itself?
Yes, okay, alright, um, and I said that, I think that we spoke, Erin, about the numbers that you would need during the day, which just.
Yes. Call the state police.
Right, cause right now, every outdoor event requires two, everything outdoors requires two, by the way.
You, you, you don't think that we should leave it up to the chief to say how many the, the events?
I think the board of selectmen can make a decision.
I think we can make a decision, yeah.
I think the board of selectmen is very capable of making a decision.
Well, I think it's ridiculous if you have, not that many, I, you know.
Um, no, but they, that, that was, you know, what, we just did some quick figuring about what you would need, when we talked about, how many people were down there last fall, during the day.
For day.
Yeah.
Well, for the day, for the day, I guess that's where we have the big dispute, is at night, we completely understand, if there's alcohol involved, then we completely agree there needs to be.
Based on the decision of the police, because that's what we came.
Right.
That's, but that, what I'm saying though, Joe, is, is it really needs to be rewritten, so that's in the documentation.
Right.
And I agree with you on the policing, bring them in, that's what we did last time, that's, they came in November, they, like I said, they were gonna plan on coming tonight, but, you know, schedules get screwed, things happen. They did plan on it, and, and we, we, we've been talking, we've talked to them on a regular basis, we do develop plans, and we work it out with them continuously before we even go through.
We, we can still vote on it, and then, you know, still have, and still have, an open invitation on a contingency that's, that is acceptable by the police department.
Contingent.
Before Groveland Day hits, maybe, cause then these teams come in and sit down with us, and we can talk about how many people.
Madam Chair, just point of information, before that, that law, I mean, that guideline is now been accepted by the town?
Mm-hmm.
That's the law, law of the land right now, as.
I, I don't know if you say it's the law of the land, I think we, we were trying to.
Okay. Okay.
I, I think, I interpreted that that to be a draft, and that we, we work on it, so, it was, everybody was comfortable with it, and we're not trying to put Groveland Days.
Right. Have. My. Right, well, my question to you, was there a public hearing to get all the groups, you know, groups that may be affected, the churches, the sports, in to say, okay, this is what we're proposing, can we sit down? Talk to the different groups that may be affected by this, and, you know, cause this, you know, our whole goal is that we all live in town and we work and live together, we wanna make things safe for everyone involved. But since this seems to have more of a far-reaching effect if, you know, taken literally, um.
Well, what we're concerned about is what happens in the town, Groveland on our watch, correct?
Yeah. As, as we are.
Other people are having an advance, churches have events, we, we're not dictating to the churches what they should and shouldn't be doing, that's not the intent.
Right. Right.
But if they get a permit for the yard sales, you would be.
Right.
Do they get a permit for the, yeah, so he wants it still.
Yeah. I think what we're doing.
We weren't considering that as special event though, we weren't considering yard sales, Grove, I mean, those weren't considered.
Okay.
But they shut down roads.
So a road race isn't a special event?
Special events.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, cause I did bring that in.
So the road race, technically, we need no police officers then, we shut down roads? That's great for us, I'm just saying, I mean, it's not safety wise.
I think it's a perfect, I have the old one, I don't subscribe. It's just, it's, everybody needs to simplify it, and, you know, just get, I'll be on the same page, that's the whole thing, I think everybody wants to be on the same page, they want the best of the, of what's going on.
Yeah.
We can shoot holes in everything if we want to, sit here and do that.
That's right. I've been doing that for a while.
I mean, you should, right, right.
We couldn't really get ourselves involved up here.
So, so, can I?
I guess it comes down to, is this policy for alcohol and non-alcohol, cause alcohol, it's fine.
We'll talk about that, I'm gonna.
I mean, or, because if it's non-alcohol, how it's written out is for both, I guess it needs to be, there needs to be two, one if you have alcohol, and one if you don't.
And we had to. There's sections in there for each, sections for each.
We have.
Like you said, I think it's, it was still draft, we need to work through some kinks, I mean, that happens in a lot of things, if you're right, I mean, God, every R B's are huge all the time.
I think, like I said before. I think, like I said before, this is a situation we, uh.
You know, with the battles.
You're right. Steve, what's the formula then, one for every one?
No, it was, it was, it's.
One for less than a hundred inside, two less than a hundred outside.
And then. For every hundred.
For every hundred, was another two.
Two for what?
Two for every hundred outside, one for every hundred, oh, one for the first hundred inside, right?
Right.
So if you were having a shower, if you need a police officer, that's always been the case, right?
No, not much of liquor.
Not for non-alcohol. Only for alcohol.
Only for alcohol.
Alcohol.
Right.
There you go.
I think we could need to clarify alcohol versus no alcohol, make it very clear.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's gonna be a good part of fixing the problem right there. And if we could put a line in there stating that we'll get the chief to come before us, if we have a big event like the, like the Groveland Day, we'd have the chief come in and we could all sit down with your committee, and we could all discuss how many we think it's gonna take. And that's what I've said, I think the town boards need to intertwine better, and I think this is a perfect example right now, if, you know, we have a police department over there, we have you there, us here, and we're all kind of still not put together yet, know what we need, they didn't, you know what I'm saying, they didn't show up, but. On the same token, we're trying to help you guys out, and I agree, I, I don't, I'm big on not having alcohol, period, that's just me personally, but if there is alcohol, I'd rather see more officers there than less officers are.
Typically, typically, what happens is the last two years, we've been, we asked for this specific thing to be built, this is, this is on an aster creation of this, um, and, and Betty and, 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 um, Donnie wanted this as well, because we, before Joe got in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, they, they agreed that this is something, there needs to be some checklist, that's basically what it's from, we want really a checklist so that all groups could follow the same standards, so that's where it was created from. And the police, and that's, we, we do usually work out, well, it's just this last, we, we didn't want, you know, we asked the police to come in informally, because, you know, this, we wanna get this fixed first, but I, I guess we should have had that whole thing, we usually come in with full detail of exactly what we're doing.
Well.
Right, and this is folding us up unfortunately.
You're not able to do the plan, cause we're not nailed down with the guidelines, I hear you.
Right.
Because if we need sixteen police officers, the, the Groveland Day won't happen.
I understand, alright, so we're saying, let me read this out to you.
I understand, all right, so we're saying, let me read this out to you, so for the for the public's benefit as well, for indoor functions with greater than one hundred guests, a minimum of two police details are required. Recommendation, the consensus of this board is one, not two, right?
For an indoor function?
Or indoor.
No alcohol.
No alcohol.
Right? And then.
One police officer, um.
Right.
That's over a hundred?
For indoor functions with greater than one hundred guests, a minimum of two, that's the way this is written now, we're saying. This is indoor, where indoor functions are greater than one hundred, with more than.
Oh, yeah, cause a hundred, anything under a hundred is one.
Okay, so this works, got it.
Okay, except that's still very detrimental to V C.
For people, no.
All right.
Why are you always having it is under a hundred, you don't have a cop.
Police detail.
Right, but a lot of weddings have a hundred and they don't have alcohol.
It doesn't look like we have to make any changes, it looks like we've already made the change.
Well, if the only problem came about because we we had alcoholic things, you know, that should be changed.
The other thing, now the second one, let me read it to you, okay, let's let's stay on the same page, for outdoor functions, a minimum of two police detail officers are required for every one hundred guests. Well, that's the recommendation that we have, but that's already in here.
That's that's not feasible, two offices for every hundred with non-alcohol is not feasible.
And you're saying one instead?
I would say, I would say, leave it to the discretion of the police officers to discuss based on the event.
I like that idea.
Police chief.
But you consent over there to the police chief, this is what we intended.
Says what Bill Dunn says.
Yeah.
I would let it to the police chief.
Exactly, it's a content, every every permit is a contingency based on a written plan.
That's what you mean with that.
Have them go before the police and tell them what's going on, and then they know, and then they can, so I think it needs to be amended.
Cause you're almost saying, anything that's going on in town, you're gonna have to have people there.
And that's for both alcohol and non-alcohol, we agree, we're actually fine with the two per officers per hundred for the alcohol piece, because this is the only event that actually has the alcohol, is Groveland Day. And and that's it, and and the police, like you said, the police were very happy with the last last year's thing, you know, and the first year they did it, they 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 were really excited about it, they said it was great, the second year they said there was a couple of cups, they they know what they were, they they dressed them, they quickly did exactly what they were supposed to do, and we did what we were supposed to do, everything was handled. So now they said, this is what we recommend for this year, based off of what happened last year, it's a girl thing, which is a very good thing.
So. Good thing, my recommendation is either, I'm asking for consensus with my colleagues here, either Nancy requests, um, a report from the police chief on our behalf, or Denise will. I'll change it.
A report for what?
That the plan for Gro- the plan for Groveland Day during the day, the non-alcoholic portion, whatever you're suggesting there, in other words, you know, how many, how many?
Projecting others, maybe.
I would leave it up to the each, each, what we've done in the past, I would leave it to the discretion of the individuals that are going for the permit.
Leave it to the police chief. Right. Right, but we need to, I'd like to get.
To go to the police and get them to, and then have them have to send a document that comes back to to Nancy so she has it, she doesn't have to go through it.
It could be a suit.
We have to help work out the details anyways, like parking, I have to go and I have to say, this is how we're planning on doing it, then they come back and they say, Steve, can you edge this up? That's what we did last year for July third, I shut down one whole side with no parking all the way up, um, Gardner and.
When they, when they go for the permit, like you go for building permit, they have check offs, I don't know on the permit, is there a spot where they say they need to get checked off to talk to the police chief?
Right, no, there is that checklist, that we're trying to get.
That's what we're trying to do, that checklist is, that what you have in hand is basically what we ask for is a checklist.
Right. Right, so I'm saying the actual permit, when they go for the actual permit.
Well, they give us, you know, they're requesting you use, uh, kind of speed, kind of speedway, bank rack area, um.
Right.
Yeah.
We usually have that when we come, like, we'll have a whole detailed land.
A packet of what you're doing, all the vendors.
Right.
We have Steve as a map, he's, um, he's already worked out with the police department of what's gonna happen.
Yep. Right. Yep.
Then we have a whole detailed list of what's gonna happen, where it's gonna happen, sometimes what times it's gonna happen.
But you need that one.
Insurance binders that you need, and how many police details we'll have.
Right, so instead of you going to the chief, I think we should go to the chief and say, can you give us a written, uh, an internal memo, how many police officers or details do you need for Groveland Day?
Mm-hmm.
What's your plan, and then we go with it, we all go with it.
But how does it affect other special event permits?
Right.
But that's, that's that's where you need to delay.
And they're sure they're uniformed.
That's the out, that's one of the, big, the big ones, what they're saying is like baseball, for instance, they have their opening day, there's well over a couple of hundred people there.
Right.
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 And that works out fine.
But we need to justify that they don't, they don't need police.
Right, there's no alcohol there, the streets are blocked off for the kids to march from the fire station around the block to the field, uh, there's a cruiser that leads the way, there's two cruisers that block the traffic, it works fine, it has never been a problem.
Well, I think the policy, the guideline.
Yep. Never been.
Are we comfortable, I'm talking to my colleagues here, are we comfortable that we have this policy, this guidance, this guide written, so that we get something in writing from the police department for all events? It's an extra step, but it's, you know, I think it's worth it.
I think.
You need to amend it, Joe.
I think it needs to be amended, I think it needs to be amended, I think you you need to clarify the smaller group of people, it needs to be amended for the smaller group.
No, that's what I'm saying.
No, I remember going to a night at the library where they probably expected a lot of people, and they had wines or there, and they had one police officer in the the library, and that was fine.
We're not around.
And that's all we've ever had a wine or not, is one.
Right, that's been updated.
Well, I I am suggesting.
I think what's gonna happen if if.
Many people show up without, over a hundred.
But I I am suggesting an amendment, I'm suggesting put that in an amendment, and we go with that.
Which we're.
Okay. It's.
Correct.
I think board of selectmen has the capabilities of working with any group that comes here.
Two.
I think so.
And then they make their presentation to us and go and talk with Sergeant McDonald or whomever over there and work it out that way.
Yep.
And then come back, but they they can submit the letter to the.
And say, look, that they can say to us, we're all set with this.
It'd just be like the permits for the alcohol, when we send, we send you, once we get everything in, you're you're in there for the insurance binders, then it comes to you already, and she, and Nancy keeps a full package of everything on each event. I think that's the best way, cause then I'm involved, whomever is involved in the the setting up, so you don't have to see us again five times in one, I know you like seeing me do it, it is, everybody does. But but it's just, you know, one, us coming in one time saying, this is our plan.
Have your whole package together, boom, it's all done, you sit down with us, and that's the end of it, you've done your legwork, you've been at the police department, everything, so the amendment.
So.
When you do it often enough, you know what's happening.
Who's gonna write that language then, who's gonna write that amendment? Do I volunteer? So we get it done by June sixteenth?
We'll write it.
You wanna write it and send it to Nancy?
And has this been adopted as policy at this point?
Huh?
Had that been adopted as policy, no, correct?
Where's the?
The guidelines, you call that.
We're still going.
Where's the?
Guys.
Oh, guidelines, she's still going to it.
Or that they.
Joe, do you wanna take notes down, make it out and write it in?
No.
I gave it to you.
Take some notes from what?
Nothing's taken.
There you go.
I don't wanna get, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
So there doesn't need an amendment.
I wanna do a writing. No, I'm just saying, take notes.
Yeah.
So right now, I'm kinda confused, I mean, I know what we're trying to get to, but I'm trying to confuse the power we're gonna get there.
All right.
So with this quest. So with this quest, I mean, she wouldn't need a police officer to.
So how do we word it?
All right, contingent, contingent, all right, I I'll give you the language.
Nancy wants it.
Nancy, if you wanna write it down, I'll give you the language. Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna write it right now.
It's just a contingency upon the police chief or the police department, save yourself the aggravation, police department.
Yeah, that's simple, at the end of it.
Exactly, so police detail is just simply written as such, um, contingent upon securing a permit. Police department, so we don't have to name a person or officer in the police department.
Permit through the board of selectmen.
Is is to provide a memo to the board of selectmen with a detailed plan for police coverage.
Okay, so to non-alcoholic events.
For non-alcoholic events, thank you.
Oh, for non-alcoholic events.
Alcoholic and non-alcoholic.
We have a question.
Oh, that's right, it doesn't matter.
Right, well, we have the question on the non-alcohol, whether.
Now, this is specific to a non-alcoholic.
So that's basically.
Whether like V C needs a permit to run a non-alcohol event.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on.
To provide a memo to the board of selectmen, what was the very last thing he said?
Provide a memo to the board of selectmen.
As to what?
Um, as part of the permitting process.
As part of the details, right.
Right, specifying how many offices is that a doing?
Yes, specifying specifying the number of officers or details.
Needed.
Needed specifically for the applied for event.
Yeah, if you want a full detailed plan of exactly what we're doing, like parking and everything, they they, we go through it in detail.
Yeah. Yeah, good, is that satisfactory to you?
But I want absolutely that, it's just.
So V C, if they have a baby shower, under a hundred people or.
Now we're on a different.
No, can I, can I talk a minute about V C, because V C is different, and I don't really want it thrown into the, the only thing that affects V C that you're making this decision on that I'm concerned about is alcohol events.
For indoor events.
Because you don't grant any permits for any other kind of events, or any events that we have, the only, the only permit that you permit for V C is an alcohol permit itself. So rather than get into, you know, how it's gonna affect V C, it isn't gonna affect V C, except if you change the number of police details required for an alcohol event, that's what I'm concerned about.
But that's gonna be, that's, the way we're building this right now, that's gonna be, they're gonna go to the chief, and the chief would say how many they need.
But why, it's the same always, we have one facility, there's nothing different about it, somebody comes in, they're gonna have a wedding, they're gonna have a hundred and twenty-five people. What we typically do is, you know, they go and they talk to the police and they arrange the detail, but it's one detail, and we tell them you have to have one detail come.
Right.
So if you're sending someone who's getting married from the, when when they book V C to the police department, to make arrangements for the details and the payment, then it fits this policy.
It fits what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you don't say, we require more than one.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
No, no, that we're taking that literally, so we can change it.
Yeah, we just, that language that we've written, we just wrote as, you know, the board of selectmen that we've just recommended, that Nancy just wrote down is.
Yep.
Nancy has an issue, uh, question.
Oh, not an issue, I have a question, um, what's the most you allow for people at a wedding?
I was gonna ask that question.
I think that's important to know at V C, cause usually people.
It it. You can't, yeah, you can't fit more, you know, typically it's a hundred or under, there are s, we we have had some events where they use the whole facility, and they may have a hundred and twenty-five or something under.
Meaning outdoors and the rest of your.
Well, or or even just in the whole building, but those are very rare.
So it's usually around a hundred people.
So.
Yeah.
So you're still a hundred or less.
So that's a better word. Could you do yours? It, I I think Mike, I think that the contingency thing would work, uh, for you as well.
It would, because you'd be at, you'd still be, let's say, a hundred twenty-five, you'd still have basically one officer you'd need there.
Yeah.
And all we're doing is we're putting it in play that they go see the chief, that's the only thing we're putting in play, and they have to go anyway, as it is, they have to go.
Right.
Does that not happen when they come in with it?
I keep saying the chief, but it's the.
Use permit, you usually tell people that they have taken touch with the police department.
Oh, yeah, that's the first thing I know.
So that, so Nancy usually takes care of that anyway.
And they know that from V C.
They don't get.
When they come in here, fill that out with Nancy, then Nancy says you need to go to the police department to make sure you.
And then I, what I do is I send the police chief a copy of the permit, the license, and he he knows now of the upcoming event, because they told his schedule a week or two before the event.
Yeah.
And so he has that, and he gives that to the officer that, um, agrees to do the detail.
So that's really taken care of.
I think also that.
So for now, Groveland Day, we can do, you know, we do with the plan for daytime, and at nighttime, we still have to see you for approval.
Okay, now we're gonna open up a discussion about that, is that on your agenda?
Cause.
Why would it be any different?
It's too different.
Cause they can, if the board of selectmen consider it two different issues.
Cause there's no alcohol. I understand, but don't all issues need to go before the police department, if it was day or evening?
So the, the, the alcohol one, for 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 Groveland Day, what we need to do is, because it's alcohol, we need the approval of the of the selectmen before we even go, because, so, so what we, what we're asking is, is for this year, as of the last two years, we've done it, this will be our third year.
Right, I understand clearly, I give.
We're asking for the selectmen to make a decision on allowing us to have a beer and wine tent on Groveland Day at night for the for the five thirty to nine, like we've had in the last two years. And contingent upon us meeting the criteria of going to the police department to create a plan, and also making sure that we meet the minimum standards of the insurance, which is what we already agreed upon anyways, cause it's, all of the people we use are insured to the five million dollar max anyways. I mean, what it, what the request is, so what we're asking for you is allow us to move on to the next step of going to them, but this one piece, with the alcohol, this is the only event that we do on town properties that has alcohol in it, besides V C does minor ones, but this is one of the bigger ones. And we just wanted to have the selectmen make that decision so we can move forward, cause I also have to ask these companies to come in and say, can you do it now, cause we're running really late, and and I gotta hope that we can get a company, so. I know which companies said they would do it already, but we, so that's the.
Didn't Dan Stewart have some suggestions on the insurance, the max that you should have?
Yes, the, we have, the companies that we, Dan ensures the companies that we use, so they have the, they meet the minimum, um, requirements for the one and three million, plus they have a five million dollar umbrella.
Mm-hmm.
Which last year, Nancy, right, they, you had the, all the paperwork showing that the count of Grovelands and the rec committee.
What is?
So what you're asking, I'm sorry, was.
Yeah, it's approval for.
Were added on their insurance. On the binder.
We're asking them.
They're asking for permission to be able to serve alcohol.
To have an alcohol, yep, beer and wine tent.
Okay, do I have a motion that they be allowed to have, um, beer and wine tent or in the evening?
Well, certainly I'd have, certainly like to have it for a discussion, but I'd like to make a motion that we do have, um, the alcohol, um, on Groveland Day, so let's, let's have a discussion about it, cause I've got some ideas about it.
Is there a second one?
Is there a second?
For discussion purposes, I mean.
Right, second if a discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a new policy, we're just starting to work it out, we've got some hard work and volunteers, I say we need to allow the policy to work, let's let's make it work. Um, I also, I don't wanna go to the police department and say, the board of selectmen wants to have alcohol, now tell us what we need to do to make it work, what I'd like to do is, board of selectmen will allow alcohol if you come up with a a plan. But if you object to it because there were problems lastly, last year, then you let us know that.
Well, that's what we do, cause then we come back to you and say, this is what we have, you've already set it out, can we have permission to apply and do it?
I, you know, we talk about families, and we talk about memories, and you know, and I know it's a different age, and there's risks out there right now, I I know that, but alcohol at this event is not necessarily negated as being a family event all of a sudden. At least to me, um, but if you, if you're able to meet all the standards, the insurance, the liability, and a good plan with the police department, and you're falling into place with a new policy that we're just putting together now, why not give these people a chance? I don't think that's good policy on our part, it's like, okay, we need to tighten things up, there's a new policy, by the way, we're not gonna prove it for you guys, it doesn't make sense to me, we have to give it at least one more chance. And if there's problems, I'll be the first one to stand up on this desk or the other desk, if we're in the other room, and say, I never wanna see alcohol again. But again, the way what I'd like to approach the police department is, we'll we'll grant it if you think it's okay, and tell us what the plan is. I don't want the police department to say, well, board of selectmen, they don't care, they just, they're telling us they want the alcohol, I don't wanna approach it that way, I wanna approach it, we'll grant it, if it's acceptable to you as well, and give us a deep, a detailed plan that you're comfortable with. I don't think that that's unreasonable, thank you, thank you for allowing the discussion.
I'm kind of. I'm I'm kind of on board with what Joe's saying, Groveland Day was originally started to be Groveland Day for kids, the families don't have it, now Groveland Day has, in my eyes, has grown into an alcoholic event down at night. Now Groveland Day has, in my eyes, has grown into an alcoholic event down at night. Probably for the, cat, kids go home, go to bed, parents come down, have a good time, you know, a lot of volunteers come and talk, whatever. I don't have a problem with it. After coming at night, I had a big problem with it, but as long as the police department is involved in a decision and the police chief comes before us or you with a plan, I don't have a problem with it. I do, do not wanna see it like Joe said, get out of control, um, and you know how alcohol can be. And I don't wanna change the criteria, if it's, if it, they're asking for two police officers, whatever it is, I'm not gonna, that's the way it's gonna be. I think that's the way it should be.
Just, just so you know, Bill, the first year we had about a hundred and fifty people, last year we're just over two hundred, two hundred and fifty, around there. Um, and a good portion are the kids. Um, we do keep things going on at night, we, we have some issues with, um, the dunes and stuff like that. It's, it's because of the construction that you saw, we, we had a couple little minor issues, which we talked about it Dwight and myself and several others. And that, that was the major issues was the kids were going over into the dunes and stuff and, and we were pulling them back continuously. Lighting was an issue, but that's, these are some of the things that will go away and disappear completely once everything's completed down there. When it's completed, we're all on the same.
I'm talking more, I'm talking more of liability reasons, like kids getting their hands on alcohol.
Absolutely.
Especially if, if kids, if, if, I would feel better if it was all grownups with no kids, I would personally feel better. But if there's kids involved, now you have kids getting their hands on alcohol, something could happen, somebody could get hurt. You know, comes back, liability, liability our board, our board.
Yep.
And that's why I was dead against it, but I mean, if we can come back before me, I'm just saying this, I would feel better with a plan from the chief.
Absolutely.
A very firm plan stating how many officers will be there, there'll be an officer at the counter, whatever, I would feel better about it and I would be far, but.
So we have permission, well, we can have permission to start the process contingent of obviously it being successful to you.
That's what I.
Right, right, I have no problem with that. So.
Um, how do I convert this into a motion to approach the police department?
Make a, we'd make a motion that the, the rec board would go to the police department for Groveland Day's alcoholic activities at night, come back before us with a plan of what's gonna happen and, and we would vote on it at that point.
Can I, can I, friendly amendment, I'd like to suggest that, and I'll, I'll, I'll dictate it to you, see if it, see if it sounds okay with my colleagues here. I'd like to make the following motion. That the secretary of the board of selectmen approaches the police department and makes a request for a plan of action for police detail and control of the alcohol portion of Groveland Day. I think, and contingent to that, if the police department feels that there should not be alcohol, they should communicate that to us as well.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need amend it one more time.
Go ahead.
And make sure that the rec board itself is involved in that decision.
You. Fine, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Come on, favor.
Alright.
Nay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I truly believe it's family day. I know you do a great job, they're all having fun down there.
It's okay.
I worried last year after I heard the stories about what happened down there, it's dark, it's dangerous, um.
I think a lot of those will be away from, as, as, as years progress with the lighting and stuff, I think that.
I hope those things are better.
They're gonna have more lighting this year, we have, we work the electrical department.
And I don't want you to be angry, cause you know I support you guys, but I just, I think it's too big a risk
Absolutely.
and people leaving here after drinking, it's on us, you know, and we can't monitor everybody.
Yeah.
Um, and we don't know anybody's capacity for a beer or two wines or whatever. I just, I'm, it's too big a worry for me.
Not kind of.
Me.
But I applaud you all for working so hard on this.
Yeah, there's no problem.
I, I would also like to say that the responsibility has to be on the adults that are consuming alcohol, bringing their children. I don't think that the board or even the town of Groveland should assume responsibility for every single person's action. At some point, every adult has to be responsible for their own actions. And to, it's a cop out if you say that, you know, I went down there, I was served alcohol and then I drove home and got into an accident, it's somebody else's fault. You know, I don't think that that should be brought on to the, the town or the board or anything like that, because it's not really fair. If you're gonna consume alcohol, you have to be responsible for your own actions.
Cause the, the.
They're in, we're in a different world now.
I, I, I understand, I totally see where you're coming from.
Everybody's ready to wait in the front, file a lawsuit, everybody.
But the thing is, if you.
I understand it, but I.
Somebody gets paralyzed driving down the street, they'll say that town didn't pay.
But the, but the problem lies in the people that actually need to take responsibility for their own actions and nobody does it anymore.
They're captured. No, they don't, there's no responsibility.
There's two.
So, but it's not fair to punish the, the group for that one irresponsibility person, so.
There's two parts to that, what you just said, is we are an elected board and personally, if you sat here and you were elected by the town people, you're elected to do the right thing. So, that's, that's the first part, and the second part to it is, I understand the people you're saying, but
I hear you.
if a kid, younger kid that doesn't belong drinking gets involved, gets into the alcohol, that's what Betty's talking about and that's what, you know, definitely we're trying to.
I totally agree with you, I totally agree.
And, and that's why I'm hoping the police chief will have a, come back with us, or the department will come back to us with some kind of firm thing,
Just so you know, Bill.
cause I will vote on it at that point, but right now, I'm.
Just, just with Claire, last year's situation, there was one incident, one. The rest of it was minor little, I mean, kids do go down there and play in the dunes right now, they probably were over there right there or something.
Right.
Which is very dangerous, even on, on the best day.
Correct, absolutely. So there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about that, I mean, that, we, we, we will handle it pretty easily, cause we're gonna try to figure out something across that line, hopefully it's gone. The one incident that did occur, the police did handle the situation properly, that person did not drink alcohol and that's how the system works. I have two people bouncing, standing up there, plus the four cops that were there last year. We check IDs and I'm telling you, it, it, there's only, there are only allowed five drinks. The guys, the, the, the guys mark it off, they know exactly how many max out. On top of that, the cops were, they, they move around, they spread around, we talk continuously through the night. All of us are walking around making sure the situation occurs. I don't even drink myself, because I know what I'm, what my liability is, I bounced when I was younger. It's one of those things, it's, you gotta know, but you're correct, when I think of the time with all the, I'm, 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 every time I look at a plan for the pines, I can't wait for it to be done, because then you have all this lighting. You have all these things that you can control by, like tennis courts, I don't disagree with Don, that tennis courts would be fantastic. Put them on the tennis courts, they're in a cage, they don't realize they're in a cage, cause it's open area.
Right.
How softball field is not open.
The other thing I was gonna say is two, two parts, I was gonna say, which probably shouldn't, but, um, one would be, is there a way that you can corral that area in with a roping or something or getting some?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely, so they're corralled in.
And that was one of the things that they were.
And the other thing is, you talk about lighting, maybe someone could talk to the highway department, I know they have those temporary lights.
Steve, no, it's not.
We put the, we put the highway, I actually talked to, um, Brian Lynch, you know Brian, that's what's up.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian has some companies and friends in construction business, cause that's what we need.
That's right.
We have, we can't, can't use all of the town ones, because if there's an emergency situation occurs, they gotta come down quick.
Right, right, right. Right.
So we, we probably use some other private companies to come in to drop them for us.
They do it at the soccer fields on, on Seventh Street.
Yep, so we'll probably have like, we're hoping to have four total, we have one from the fire.
So you know the issues.
Yep.
You know what you guys need to work out, you know you're gonna come back before us, you know you're gonna go see, talk to the police department and you're gonna work out a good plan and hopefully it will come back before.
We just need permission to talk to them and come back.
That's all, I have, I can.
Alright, I'm gonna clarify something, I'm gonna ask for your cooperation on this. Let us initiate that conversation with them first. We're gonna send that letter, let us get, and then as soon as we're working on it, June sixteenth, it's a go, and we'll say, go ahead, go, go work on it.
I might see him tonight, so I might beat you.
I just don't want you to interfere, I want.
No, no, that's fine.
Absolutely not.
I'm just saying.
I just don't wanna be in a position where the police department says, well, the board of selectmen doesn't care about the issues we had last year.
No, no, they wouldn't think that.
So it's.
They're telling us make a plan, I'm not asking them to make a plan.
Joe, you can, Joe, you can talk to them, absolutely, Joe, they're, they're actually happening.
We have no issue, we have no, whatever they say, no.
It sounds like, it sounds like what you wanna do, and I think I'm getting a feel for it, is you'd actually like to see the police, one, a representative come talk to the board before any.
Either talk or in writing.
And, and I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Cause if, if I get a letter from the police department saying, this is a bad idea.
Right.
I'm gonna vote on that too.
Absolutely.
So I think that what, I think what Joe's getting at is, I say, I'll say it in English. I think he wants to get the police chief or the department without you guys, let them get their own honest opinion in front of us and then move on.
Absolutely.
That's the way to go.
Is it a bad idea, if it's not a bad idea, give us a plan.
I think it's a good idea. I think, I think that's a good plan.
Then, sorry, we're giving it a little bit more time as you're rushing for time, but we'll try to get that as quickly as possible.
There you go.
So we need to, we need to ask them to.
A hard deadline, June sixteenth, it's gotta be done.
Just so you know, these numbers in here came from the police department.
Right.
Without anyone giving them any information other than what would the police department feel for the amount of people that, I think Steve, initially you said three hundred and fifty people last year.
Even three hundred and fifty people.
Then you would say maybe five hundred this year, so those were the numbers I gave to him, to them, and that's when they came back.
But that would still be twelve, not sixteen, we're up to sixteen.
It says ten, I don't know where you're getting.
But the numbers they saw from.
The formula works that way.
I think originally we were concerned because it was both day, it was both.
And like.
Without alcohol.
Alcohol and non-alcohol, because sixteen cops during the day was just not feasible for.
Yeah.
And that number is active.
And at, at night, it's different, at night is completely different than, than day.
And it was asked for, it was asked for with alcohol, just so you know, those numbers were based on alcohol. You know, this needs to be, um, touched up, like the, to, to specify that it doesn't relate to both.
Yeah.
But other than that, those, those numbers were given based on alcohol being served and the problems that happened last year.
I, I believe that you're correct, you need to have it so it's not just one person saying that this is what they heard, if someone wrote this down, it needs to be in writing from them.
Yeah.
In alcohol's writing.
We need to have, we need, we need to have a direct link with the police department on this issue, so let us lead it and then.
So who would write that? You, be asking, uh, we, actually, I'm.
Well, I made the motion, it's a simple email, I'm just sending it.
May I?
I think it's important for the recreation committee to put something together though, what the day entails.
Yeah, right.
What the activities are, what's needed, when the alcohol tent, where they're having it.
But Joe's proposal, we can't do that.
I'm sorry, can I just finish this? I think it's important that that be laid out, so that when we go to the police department, we can say, this is what they need, this is their activities, this is how many people they're expecting, this is where they're parking cars, what do you propose for detail? Instead of us starting a conversation and having them question us and have us not know the answers.
Just give a, a description as best you can, the whole, um, the time you start until they're ending.
Well, I'll take all about thirty seconds though.
Yeah, you must have that in your head right now.
Because actually, they know as well as we do.
Yeah.
They've been a Groveland Day every year, they know as well as we do.
They're, they're seeing points. Dwight, Dwight, actually, that last time, the chief, the chief, I think moved it on to Dwight and the other side of the thing.
What I was thinking, what I was. What I was originally thinking was, so we don't have this going around, going around, going around. They get all their packages together, try and get a representative from the police department sitting here with us and we sit here, it starts all with.
Yep.
Going around, you know, this, let's all get together, June sixteenth, whatever it is.
I, I like that idea.
I think it's easy and it's not all this paperwork and have a bubble, boom.
Right.
One representative sits in the chair, you sit there, we sit here, we all talk about it, it's a done deal.
If the police chief has a problem with Groveland Day, we would be the first to support that.
Right.
So I don't see why there would be an uncomfortable situation where they would need a backdoor conversation to express that.
But we don't have, we won't have a backdoor conversation. We just never have.
Yeah, well, that's what Joe's proposing is to get them alone without, without the pressure of this department, so, I mean.
Oh, well, Joe, you know what, Bill and I sit here also, so. Cause you didn't notice.
You know, the, the, just so you know, the police were asked a, a simple question, based on the crowd from last year and in anticipation of it growing again this year, having beer and wine tents or whatever you call them, what do you feel would be sufficient numbers for details to cover so that, um, people aren't handing off drinks or whatever? And crowd control.
Right, and we don't really have a problem with that, Nancy, we just need to know that we can do it and what we need to do it.
It was more of the day and night, because that was.
No, I understand that, yeah.
So the night, we don't, it is what it is, what they say we need, what we need.
What we'll do.
They were talking numbers for alcohol related down there, what I don't think like it was, people handing off.
I'm trying to keep it simple, I don't wanna get it so.
Right, no, I don't want paper, I don't wanna, no, I, I.
I think that was. Can we just all meet the sixteen?
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Sounds like a plan.
We can find out if they're.
Sure.
Just, we just need a representative from the police department.
They can send a representative.
There's always a sergeant on.
Exactly, we had sergeants on.
Right, right.
If you, well, they could be on vacation, it's June, they use their vacation.
And they're the ones that make the decisions right now on this. They, 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 they come back and relate it.
Yeah, they have to use their vacation before the end of the month, but somebody I'm sure can join us.
Yeah.
So, so do we need, we can't make a motion while Joe's being here?
Yeah, I need a motion, I'll just say.
Nancy's just gonna do it.
Okay, we'll just do that, come back for sixteen, we'll all sit down and it will be, it will be taken care of.
You run into people.
If Joe wants to go before and talk to them, he can go talk to them on his own and get.
Sorry, I'll, I'll talk to them.
Okay.
No, somebody called them.
Oh, I know.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mike, are you all set with VZ?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, good, good, we didn't want VZ to have to. You know, everything is, is just, we have all different niches of what people do and how they do them and not trying to, you know, you're doing something as a fundraiser and telling you, you need this many people and.
And speaking of fundraisers, I mean, there was the bike ride that came through on, uh, Sunday and went, went fine as usual. There was no arguments, no disagreements, they came in, they worked it their way out.
To the diabetes.
We just let them know that there were people coming so that they wouldn't.
I have a little bit of car, so they can block off, so they're gonna park that.
Yeah.
Cause you know, cars are starting to roll in, I mean, there, we do, we do need to meet, by the way, I'd, I'd like to set up time, I'm gonna say this on TV, because we do need to meet about the, the house over there, um, the historical house and the tenant. The, the, I, I don't know about you, but we're getting a million complaints, so the police have gotten called, and things that, that is being said, so it's, it's been a problem.
Alright, I've gotten, Kate, are you all set for, for the July?
Yes.
July third, we were very good, it's a separate, it's a separate piece, it was already agreed upon.
Third. Okay, so that's fine. There's no issue there, and we will, when we meet again, talk about the issue we just mentioned and see if we can get some, we'll define.
No.
On the sixteenth, you want to do that?
And I'd be more than happy to send you the July third, uh, the, the thing, once I meet with the police, I'll, I'll tell them, we'll send you the plan, just so you, just so you have it.
Can I ask you a question too about bouncy houses?
Mm-hmm. Fully insured.
The one and two away.
They're not gonna blow away.
Fully insured.
I don't think any kids going down there.
They're staked down.
We stake ours down and, and we sand, we sandbag our, yeah, we sandbag our town.
They just.
They did.
They just. Alright.
And on top of that, we actually have an attendant on each one that's hired by the company and we don't have any bouncy houses for one reason, I don't like them. Um, but we have obstacle courses, they're all flat, there's nothing, I mean, it's all open. Um, actually, this year, we're actually building an obstacle course, not building, building, but they're creating one from scratch, which is pretty cool. A lot of fun stuff coming.
Do I need to take back my motion, are we clear?
We, we did a lot of work when you started.
We took a water. The water, I got shot down.
We'll be back during the sixteen.
You just start drinking water.
You're going to bring the police in and, and the group back on the sixteen?
Thank you, alright, thank you.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's great, thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, see you later, bye.
Oh, Betty, did you want lands here before they guarded?
Oh, did you not?
Steve, um, I, where, where, I think we're gonna be talking about, um.
Yeah. Okay, you get us? Yeah, I, um, Lisa O'Connor's gonna come dig it up.
Okay.
But I was leave some for you if you wanted.
Rec, rec.
Rec me.
Do you want me to bring you by? What other people?
I'm not rec me.
Yeah.
I'm just a soccer.
No, I know.
Hundred percent.
He said you did.
I know, I thought just he might bring it out.
And he doesn't come back.
Exactly, everything, I mean, people, I did the fun things, that's all, it's down to one and one, which is what I wanted firstly.
Thanks.
Good. I'm the rules baseball, parents staying with us.
We took away all the privacy inside versus outside.
Okay.
Joe and I started traveling with this, my, and Marissa, so I'm representing alone.
Joey. Yeah, yeah.
And what we were asking them to do is buy and wrap the whole thing, so it's all in one building, which is minimal.
We have a CPA, they're only giving money to build a new facility, not to pass the concessions, the concessions stand.
But this is part. But then we wouldn't be able to do the door.
We'll have to talk about that, that's not what you, that's not what CPA voted on.
Interesting.
The vote was to build a.
Good job, Bill.
Structure.
Structure, not like.
You fit like a glove on this board.
It took, so that's how it works, it was, the initial words to make this all.
I just hate that, I hate a bar, uh, going back and forth, but I, I believe that.
Yeah, I'll talk to them.
It took away the concession, we, we, we need, we, if it doesn't make sense, then it would look embarrassing, like one building attached to the other.
Right. Like schedules, right.
Okay.
Which has been.
Alright, we're going to.
Yep.
Thank you for being here. Um, Groveland Baseball League Representative, uh, Joe Sullivan's away this evening, he's, uh, traveling on business. Erin Pinkham is here, and we'll continue our discussion on Washington playground equipment needs.
We are, well, I am here, uh, to find out what the decision was from Bobby Arakalian on scheduling, uh, an excavation and the availability of wood chips at the DPW garage. And if they are not available, um, then I propose that we come back in two weeks on June sixteenth to see if there is any leftover from bill pay that Nancy.
The municipal funds, right, that we might have for wood chips.
Correct. Correct.
Was it someone asked Bob, probably Nancy, right?
She said she would, um, she'll be back in, I'm sure, um.
There she is.
Sorry.
Um, how about Bob, did he say anything about the playground equipment at Washington Park? Were there any chips over at the highway garage or?
I haven't seen Bob and I found out only Thursday or Friday that his mother-in-law had died and, um, she had been very ill and, um, Nancy and he were dealing with that, so I haven't really had a chance to talk to him.
I can notice.
Um, you know, I thought that, um, we were recommending that we use the cleaner chips and I was gonna look at my budget to see if I had some money.
That's what Erin just mentioned.
Correct, but, but the point of us being here was to see if he could get us a schedule for excavation timeframe and then if there was availability of chips at the garage
Oh, that's right, that's right.
and if not, then we would come back again, maybe in two weeks to see if there's any leftover municipal funds to be able to use for the playground chips.
So anyway, as far as the guys, he's got other, he's got, um, somebody from the school, that no school, looking for him to finish up over there, the fire department's looking for their paving, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, he's really out there with work for the town.
If we were to do the wood chips as a temporary fix now, and, and I spoke to Joe briefly one night, um, he, they just, you know, the little he goes until dark. And, um,
Well aware.
And we believe that baseball certainly should apply for some community preservation money.
Absolutely, that is in our long, absolutely, that's in our long-term plan, we would like to go.
For the future. Absolutely, because now it's an opportunity for existing playgrounds to tap into those funds.
Correct.
So that's something that you definitely have to do.
Correct.
And I talked with Greg, um, who was here, um, before Denise, and, um, you know, we had a discussion about that. Do you have any idea what the excavation for the wood chips around that play area would entail?
Um, I believe that it needs to go at least six to eight inches deep and, and then there is nine inches of wood chips that need to be applied. So you excavate down six inches and then there is, um, a six inch timber that I assume sits along the top.
Is it like a berm or something, is that what you call it?
Yes, so basically you have nine inches of wood chips, six of which is below ground, three of which is at grade
Okay.
and then you have essentially a three-inch lip around the top to prevent spill over or containment of some sort.
And, and what is the, what's the dimensions, is that guy doing, uh, go around like the swings and?
It would be. The swings are, would be, have, would have to be a part of the CPA funds.
Okay.
Basically, we have an area that's approximately twenty by twenty.
Okay.
Uh, for around the the playgrounds.
Yeah.
The main playground.
Okay.
So you're not gonna do wood chips in a twenty by twenty area, nine inches thick?
Correct.
Are you doing costs or are you doing?
Yards.
Yes, okay.
The, the, um, the estimate, um.
We had fifteen yards to do that area.
Okay.
Fifteen yards at, at roughly, I mean, a high number, fifty-two dollars a yard at, um, Landscapers Depot.
The, um.
Seven hundred eighty dollars.
Okay.
The, the estimate that we had, there with me, well, I pull it up here, um.
I thought it was like fourteen hundred.
Yeah, it, it was like eighteen hundred, I thought, yeah.
Eighteen hundred, yeah.
I think they're probably doing the whole area, cause he was talking about thirty or forty yards, if I remember.
Cause he, cause we have, um, in the, in the estimate, um, twenty-seven yards of, um, rubberized mulch, or forty-five yards of playground mulch.
Yeah. Right.
And what did you just figure that on, who you are?
I figured on fifteen, I did a twenty by, well, she said twenty by twenty area, did, do you have an area, he?
Uh, we have, um, let's see, twelve, they were twelve-foot timbers and we needed forty of them. So.
Those timbers expensive, too.
Yeah, thirty-nine dollars a piece.
How many?
Thirty-nine dollars a piece.
How many do we need, twenty?
No, you're gonna need to.
This, this estimate said forty.
Yeah, you're gonna need thirty-five, forty of them anyway. But what I, what I'm getting at, for, for now, until we get to that CPA money, can we excavate the area and just put the chips in for now somehow, just to make the place safe?
I think that's what we had spoken about at the last meeting.
And not do the timbers at this point, the, once the CPA money comes in.
Yes, that's, correct, that's what we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, all right. You had a guy that was interested in maybe using a bog cat over there?
Marissa had spoken to somebody, yes, and then that was when we brought up the issue of insurance and liability and.
Sure.
So the, so the main area you're, you're concerned is the swing side area, not?
No, it's the, the.
No, it's this play structure where the kids come down.
Yes.
So what I did is I went down, took a look at it, and saw what you're talking about, and obviously it's a mess, it's dirt, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it would literally take, I mean, I'm in the business, I mean, I have a machine.
Sure.
It would probably take maybe four or five hours to clean that dirt out from underneath there, probably take it to the highway garage, and then, like I just said, you know, fifteen, maybe sixteen yards of chips in there to make that area safe. I, but, but I don't think we have the money, we talked about this last time, you know?
How many hours did you say it might take somebody?
Four to five hours with a machine, and a guy with.
And if we, and if we get the chips delivered and just drop them, I'm sure that we can drum up enough people to, to square them out, you know?
Get someone to drop them in.
Wheelbarrow, or maybe somebody's got a little.
Get ten guys down there and bang it out and it'll.
So Bob doesn't, we don't know if Bob has time to even excavate it out right now.
I can ask him tomorrow, I didn't wanna bother him last week where the funeral and everything was happening, so.
It's rather dangerous, right, all right.
Um.
And I'm sorry, Erin, I forgot.
That, that's.
I would, I would donate my time, I've done it before down there with, down there, but I am so busy with work, I'm working Saturday, so the only day I have open is Sunday to do it. I mean, if it comes to a situation, I'll go out with my machine and work with a bunch of, group of people and dig it out, it'd have to be on a Sunday, it's the only time I have right now.
That's fine, so we don't have any games on Sundays.
But then we have, the issue, we don't have the chips. So we need to find the, the chips.
We need to see if we can buy the chips. If, if at the end of this month Nancy has any money.
I just bought chips, but, I just bought chips at, at a job in Middleton, we're doing a playground in Middleton, I bought them from Noonan, so I was in a rush to get them, and I paid forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents a yard, it was a thirty by thirty play area, and I used, um, shy of four, maybe fourteen yards, so.
Maybe we don't need as many as they think.
Well, one thing, if we can just make the place safe, yeah, make it.
If it's temporary, it's to get through this year and then.
So I'm saying, if we, if we appropriated, if we could get eight and, eight and nine hundred dollars for chips, I think we're good.
We get the.
I could do that.
Think you could, Nancy?
You know, I could do up to a thousand, I, I didn't know if I could go all the way to up to eighteen hundred, cause my bills aren't all in yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we just had to spend a lot of money on the parking lot lights that I wasn't anticipating, they were all out.
Were they, yeah.
So why don't we make a, I'll make a proposal that if we can keep the wood chips under a thousand, volunteers put them in place, and.
We can, we can get volunteers to put them.
If Bob can't excavate it with the town guys, then I will find time to excavate it, so just keep the place going.
That sounds, that sounds great, Erin.
That sounds great to me.
Yeah, we don't need to make that motion, just by consensus.
No, I think we just, I, I, we all agree that that would be fine for now, and then that they can put their proposal together for future improvements, yeah.
Yeah. And I would suggest trying to get them from, um, Landscapers Depot's cheaper.
Think so.
But the delivery might be more, by the time you come from New Hampshire.
Yeah, I think it's, um, it was a hundred dollars delivery, and I'm not sure, w- uh, one of the guys on our board is a landscaper as well, so he put together some of the numbers for its pricing, so, um, I'm not sure, one of the other numbers that we got from Marissa's friend also had Landscapers Depot as a, as a.
Right, well, place it out between them and the units and see what the, the bottom line number is.
So, okay, so if you can, if I can get numbers up to a thousand, or less than a thousand, come back to you on the sixteenth,
To the.
and then we can get together a date on when, when we do a Sunday's work, cause we don't have any games going on, there are practices, but it's a great day
It's a, it's a good day.
because there's just, the people that are at the field are usually the people that practice and not other families.
Good, good.
So Nancy, you'll work on Bob?
So how big of an area am I asking you to get?
I don't know, you said twenty by twenty?
Twenty by twenty, you said, Erin, didn't you?
Twenty by twenty's small, to be honest with you, I don't, I think that unit is bigger than that.
Well, my, that was my rough.
An average unit, thirty by forty is an average.
Not a, I'm not a math major, um.
Where, 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 maybe if you describe what part you want to.
It's, it's only around the, the playscape, I don't know what else to call it, but.
The sandbox that they have, it's not a sandbox, no, we don't.
No, but, no, no, the ones, the slides and the climbing things and the, the spinning towel, uh, tire, yeah.
A piece of unit that was donated to the town. The, the unit that was donated.
Okay, all right. The, the tire, yeah, okay.
So that structure in and of itself, and as far out as this is necessary.
Okay.
I think you can do it for a thousand dollars.
Okay.
And what we're gonna do is when it gets dumped there, we'll just excavate and, and, and make it work, just make it, you know, we know that when they come down the side, we gotta make that area safe first, and it may not look pretty, I mean, we'll make it look nice, but we'll do.
It'll be safer for the kids.
It'll be, it'll be safer than landing on hard packed dirt, that's for sure.
Right. Right.
Cause where the tire is, isn't there a big divot there?
It is, it fills with water and it's a big.
And maybe we could talk to Bob about just dropping off one of his loads that he has at the highway garage, and they can just put on the other unit, just lay it under there for the time being, some of the falls, at least they're safe, the ultimate excavation over there, but there is some pretty big divots and stuff.
You saw, yeah.
And, and we do plan on going to CPA, um, for funding in September.
Yeah, cause you get in early, the first of the year, and.
Like I said, oh, come.
Denise, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to suggest if the board is on board with this, I don't really think you need to come back at a future meeting, if, you know, Nancy can speak to Bob,
Right, I think that, I know.
Right.
if you can get a quote for under a thousand, I don't think we need to wait two weeks to act on it.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I don't think you need to come back before the board.
Right.
Okay, so just, can I contact you privately relative to your time for getting it together, and then do I send you a, how do I, how do I build the town?
Sure. Sure, yep, yep. But I would do it before, before you.
You're helping the town, you, you, well, I don't know if, um, Landscape, whatever you call it, Depot, would be willing to build the town.
Depot.
Okay.
You may have to have someone use a credit card, right?
Yeah, I'd really rather not, but we can really try and set up an account through wherever you're gonna get a price.
Can we set up a credit?
We have a couple of units.
Why don't you, yeah, why don't you do that, wherever, you decide where you're gonna go and let Denise know, and she'll try to set up an account for the town, so that you can go there and, or call and all of that.
Okay. Okay.
And what I would do is I would talk to Nancy in the, in the next couple of days, if, if Bob can do it.
Okay.
I'll let you know, I'll email you as soon as I talk to her.
Okay, so I need to talk to you, you, you.
Right.
Well, you may not need to talk to him, wait on Bob, so wait, wait on Bill.
Right. Right, one, one thing that I had said, and I'll say again, is it's unfortunate that we cannot take better care of our parks. I just think it's very unfortunate, I think a lot of town people in this town go out and they put a lot of their blood, sweat and tear into these parks for us, under a voluntary condition, and it's really the town's liability to take care of these parks, and I, I think we need to do a better job at it.
Well, this is a good start.
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
I think we're good.
Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So?
Yeah, we're all set, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Tell Joe you did, you did a great job.
Oh, good, all by myself.
So Nancy will see Steve when she emails you, that way you have my.
Okay, great, thank you, all right.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Now we're going to have a discussion or an update on, um, our land purchases.
It's attached to your agenda, one of the papers. There it is. That part of the license for VZ.
Oh, I've got this, we need to sign this too.
Yeah, you need about two.
Who's reading that, I don't know what I did in there. Okay, we have an update on Bussing, Madely and Angeline, Angelinei properties, um.
Got it though?
Yep.
Can this be discussed, of course it can in open session, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, Mr. Bussing's attorney has informed council that they have located the owners of parcels, uh, thirteen acres and eight acres, and they've reached an agreement with both owners. The third parcel that was in question is held by Mr. Bussing in the name of another of his companies. They feel they'll have these three title issues cleared shortly and prior to the June thirtieth, eleven fifty-nine P M deadline. Mike, you, did you receive this information too?
Yes.
Okay. And then, nothing that we need to discuss about any of this at this time, other than this information we've just recently received?
No, I don't think so, I mean, I've been communicating with Nancy, and I think between the two of us.
Back and forth with Nancy, okay, good, and Nancy talks with Jonathan Eichman, and do either of you gentlemen have any questions?
The note came directly from Attorney Eichman.
Okay, good.
The only thing I say is that I know in the town meeting we decided it's June thirtieth at eleven fifty-nine P M, and that's where I think we should stay, and if they haven't done it by then, I think, I, all discussions should be off, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you have to follow the town meeting vote, I mean, at that point, for, for the borrowing part of it anywhere, right?
Right. Right.
The, uh, the, the June thirty, just so the public understands what we're talking about here, there was a title issue with the Bussing property, at thirteen acres, and they've located the owners of the parcels, uh, thirteen and eight acres, they've reached agreements, and so now we had given them a deadline of June thirtieth, eleven fifty-nine, if not, we have to take back the financing that was approved last year, not this town meeting, but the prior year, to pay for the land, because we don't want that financing to be out there for someone else to come by and ask to use it for something else. So this letter is telling us, this, this, the update, not a letter, is up, is, is, is suggesting a P S could be drawn for signature at this time, uh, with the contingencies added, that cleared title must be certified by that date, and they feel that they can get the title cleared well before June thirtieth. So that's good news on the Bussing property for folks that, uh, in town that are interested in, uh, you know, understanding where we're at with that process.
Right.
The next item is Mrs. Madely's attorney's.
I, I'd just like Joe to make sure that people know that, um, the seller is required to have to pay in full for any additional counsel, and the title examiners, which the seller has agreed to do so.
Yes. Thank you, Betty, that's.
Because that, you know, that became an issue for us with the delay, the delay, why should we keep sending, you know, our bills to our council and be responsible?
So my, my is, my question is, is, um, bring it to speed, on June thirtieth, eleven fifty-nine, he has to have a clear title, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, absolutely, so that's.
Are you done signing, you don't?
Right, okay, so that's what I'm saying, that's what time.
Your, your, if you sign a P N S prior to that time, it would be null and void at eleven fifty-nine if town council has not told you the title has been cleared.
Right, right, right. So financing is one, one aspect, if, if the other aspect is having to clear a title at eleven fifty-nine, so I just wanted to be clear of that.
If you agree on it.
Good, the next one, I'm not quite sure on, Mrs. Madely attorney is working diligently on locating the paperwork that wasn't recorded, can, can someone shed some light on that, just? I understand it as well?
There, there was a, there was a, um, some problems with some of her title.
Okay.
And it wasn't, it wasn't land parcels, it was, um, based on, um, when people had died and owned the years.
Sure.
One of them was from out of state, it's my understanding they were out of state, and they did it right where they lived, but it wasn't, the paperwork wasn't sent to the probate here to clear, make the title clear on this end.
They're trying to make significant progress, so this is a little bit more open ended, right, it's not looking like a certain deadline's been launched up.
Yeah. But that, we're not borrowing for them, that's why there's no deadline on it, they were using CPA funds and grants, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, we cannot close on that property until the state tells us, uh, because of the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. I heard from, uh, the woman at the state who's working on that, and she said, this was last week, she thinks that probably about a month.
Okay.
So that's good, you know, that Madely's still working, cause they could be coming back saying, you know, when are you gonna close, when are you gonna close, cause you're not ready to close.
Right.
And then.
They had been doing that until we found out that they had a title issue, so now they're working diligently to get that title.
To get that squished away, yeah.
Betty, did you have a comment on Angeline?
Um, just that we're going to have a hearing on the Angelinei property, and I have a notice here, would you like me to read that? Read this out loud, Nancy, so everybody, it's a legal notice, public hearing, earth removal permit, and this is something we must do when this takes place. The Groveland Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June sixteenth, this year, at six thirty P M in the Selectmen's office. Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on the application of the Town of Groveland Water Commissioners for a permit for earth removal activities on property loca- located on Zachary Lane, Groveland, Mass, and shown on Assessors Map thirty-three, Hostels six and ten. A copy of the plans are on file in the town's clerk, town clerk's office and are available for viewing Monday, through Thursday, nine A M to four thirty P M, and Monday evenings from six P M to eight P M, and it's the Groveland Board of Selectmen, and I'll have to sign this as the chairperson.
Well, you don't have to sign it, that's what went in the paper, the signature doesn't go in there, very good.
Okay, this is, okay, very good.
So is the actual water department trying to remove the earth, or the Angeline is trying to remove the water department's earth?
No, the, 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 um, water department is applying for the earth removal permit, because once they do, then the Selectmen can sign a purchase and sale of Angelinei's property.
Okay.
We will then be the owner, so that's why the town is involved. Bill would, will be the contractor to remove what he had stockpiled there, that was part of the P N S agreement, that he would take what he had already stockpiled,
Okay.
and remove it to his other property in New Hampshire, I believe it is.
So the water commissioners are buying land, how are they involved, I'm confused.
No, the, the, the town's buying the land, uh, the water department is don't, you know, they're, they're buying, uh, they're paying for a portion of it, the rest of it's being paid with CPA money, so their interest is that they want to put a well on the property, uh, so that's why they're doing that. But a- as Nancy said, as part of the agreement that we had with Bill Angelinei was, he wanted to be able to remove this loom and gravel from the site, so that was a condition that he put on, you know.
Is it the whole property back there, is it his, all his big, the whole parcel that puts up the Bussings, we're purchasing that whole piece back there?
Yes, yeah.
So Angelinei wa- once this goes through, he's done, he, that land's sold.
Right.
He doesn't have any on land, it's just that whole parcel.
Right, right.
Okay. And how long does he have time in the P N S to move that earth, how long are we giving him?
Five years, five years.
Five years to remove it.
With an ex, a possible extension of two years, depending on what's happening.
So can the town, can the town hang on and not have to put the water or situate, what they're trying to do, if, if he's taking five years to remove the stuff?
They don't have plans to put any wells in there right now, so it, it doesn't look like it's gonna affect, what he's doing isn't gonna affect the, uh, placement of the wells.
They just wanna secure the land for future well, well protection, or well, um, what do you call it, construction.
Right, right.
Am I right?
Yes, right.
And, just because I don't know, how much was the purchase?
The price, um.
Was it nine hundred?
Yeah, eighty or so, nine, yeah, so, yeah.
It was nine hundred. Yeah, just under a hundred, uh, I, just under a million.
Right, and it's, um, fifty-four acres, I believe.
Okay, good, that's a good update, I'm glad we were able to express that, so the public can understand, thank you.
And you'll find all that information if you take that packet home and read, I gave you all, Betty, I put one too for you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, and the, uh, uh.
The plan, the plan and stuff.
Yes, I've got all of this, does everybody have this?
Yeah.
I have it, yeah, so the, so the prices.
Okay, all right.
That, that's what you'll need for next, next meeting.
So we've already negotiated the price, it's all negotiated.
We'll have that hearing right here.
Yes, but we don't have a purchase and sale on that one yet, we have all the terms spelled out, but because of the order of things, town council advised. the Selectmen not to sign a purchase and sale until the permit is granted.
Right.
So.
Because it'd be a conflict, until, until the water department gets the permit.
Right.
The Selectmen would, you know, wouldn't be proper for them to give the purchase, sign purchase and sale beforehand.
Right.
So, we still have to sit down with him and negotiate that purchase and sale.
Well, town council said that we should just send what we had sent before.
Yep.
And go from there at that, you know, at that point, once we have the earth removal permit.
No changes.
And then if we have to negotiate, you know, but let's see how it's received.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably not a bad idea.
And the earth. The earth removal permit will be in Angellini's name?
No, it will be in the water department's name and he will be the contractor for the removal.
To remove it for them?
Yeah, for the, for the water.
I see, okay, I see, okay.
Because Angellini's.
So, they have the jurisdiction of what goes on in there?
Yeah.
And the, and as far as the earth being removed, that's his part of P N S, that's his direct, he takes it, no money to the town.
Right, that was a portion of his price, that he gave the price he did, he sold it for what he was willing to sell it for
And who, right. Yep, yep.
Because he was going to have the benefit of his materials that he had stockpiled.
And who determines, who determines how deep, how wide and how much he takes?
That's all, well, that's all spelled out in the permit. You, I don't know if.
It'll seem messy.
Yeah, I think I have a, I have a here.
Yeah, that was all.
You can also look it up there.
They've, they've got it all, they've got measurements in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all worked out with, uh, Cam, you know, we, we had to pay for that.
Okay. Okay.
I do understand it.
Yeah, no, just right up.
I know.
It's all there, that's why I gave it that to study.
Okay, all right.
You got a lot of reading to do, Bill.
Catch up.
Anything else, Mike, on those properties?
No, I don't think so. Um, we, we are also wait, I forgot to say on Manningly, we're also waiting to hear from the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program because they're supposed to release some funds too, so.
Okay.
That's another thing that I'm pursuing.
When do, when do, do you think you'll hear from them, fall?
I don't know, I haven't heard from, um, water department, I, they, they're kind of working that one, I don't know what, when. I'm hoping that they're gonna release the money again and within four to six weeks.
Okay.
Is that the two, two hundred?
Hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Tom just sent a email to, to them asking him to.
One thing is, um, kind of not related to this, but kind of why we have Mike here and everyone. I got a phone call from, um, Greg Stock and he was asking about the gas station that he brought us up to speed last week and how it's beginning to be cleaned up. He said that he knows the owner of the property personally and that, that owner has told him that she's gonna reduce the price significantly and that we should jump on board to try and work that out. And I asked him to come into the meeting and talk with us and he said, I've, I've been on the bridge committee, he sounded kind of like he was burnt out, wasn't interested.
Right.
So, um, I did have the conversation with him, that's where we were and he's like, I think that would be a good thing to get that out of there and put a parking lot in and, you know, it's an eyesore for the town, which I agree, um, how we find the money and like I suggested, we need to get a committee together to, to look at, look at us. I don't know if there's anyone around that can do it.
Well, we, we've talked about that through the years and, um, when Greg was here, we discussed that, when Bill and Donnie were here, how it's important for us to have that location, not leave that gas station there, but we really wanted the cleanup done by the Getty people and the Tyree people.
Right. And they're in the process now.
We were going to get involved in something that's, that, you know, it's not a clean slate.
Right, a dirty piece of land.
Exactly.
So, they're in the process of doing that now.
Makes cer, certain, you know, makes good sense.
There's something that might work in this situation, um, I, I don't know a lot about it, I, I asked for, um, an opinion of, of an attorney that knows something about this. But there's something called a friendly eminent domain. And basically, it cures all title issues also, by the way, if that is true, I'm not sure. But a friendly eminent domain is kind of like what it sounds like, if you have an agreeable seller and
The buyer.
the municipality would like to take over land and make, they come to an agreement on a fair price, it's a very quick way to get a deal done and it also cures all title issues if there are any. So, um.
I, I think it's great, but.
I think, I think that takes quite a while, though.
It does, I was gonna say this a long time ago.
That was the only thing that I heard.
I didn't need to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
I heard that it takes a long time, that's the only downside to that.
Yeah, it does. But we've, you know, when Bill and Donnie, uh, were here, we knew that was, you know, that just couldn't sit there with the new bridge and how nice the square looks and it's something that, you know, I'm sure the three of us will continue to work on
Right.
and hopefully we'll be able to make some sort of, uh, make.
I mean, we, we have made offers.
We have, yeah.
They're just weren't satisfactory, so.
In the past, yeah, but, uh.
Well, now, Bill, Bill has presented us, Betty was.
She also has a realtor.
She does, I have his card at home too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Bill now presented us with kind of a unique situation, we had a member of the community call him.
And I, I spoke with Greg too recently.
Oh, right, and indicating that the, so do, should we call the, the selling part, should we call Joe?
Yeah. I think Greg has a good relationship with her and has been talking and he did sit on that bridge and swig committee along with a lot of other people. But, you know, as Bill said, he got, you know, he's been watching this for more than a decade, um, but I think, um.
We need to see, right, that's what we need.
When that's clean and we get that, you know, certification.
Does it say the certificate, say it's clean?
That it's clean, then, then we move ahead and, and, you know, see what we.
Oh, yes, that's right, we selected it, yeah. And back to woman, they should call.
Yeah, and see what we can do.
What with conservation, you can, I, and, uh, nobody sends up to conservation?
My, my people are meeting with them too, I went up to a meeting.
Yeah, they have to get a permit from us to do the work.
And I asked Mike to keep us informed as they go forward.
Great, so it's kind of premature at this point to talk to the?
No, I don't think it's premature, I think we need to be aware and.
We, we could, I, I believe we could send out a letter to Mrs. Delafleur and tell her it's our understanding that they're, they're in, going into the cleaning process and once she has her certificate.
Right.
Right.
To let us know and, uh, we would like to possibly submit another.
Is that a great idea, right?
I think we should do it.
The engineer that was there that night, she said they have to be done there before November, didn't she, Mike, when we listened to her?
Yeah, I think so.
So, they're going in there soon, uh, they've been in there, they've been doing borings and all of that.
Yes. And I'm waiting to hear on a site visit.
I remember, we wanted to go there.
And I'll let Nancy know when that is, so if you wanna go.
Good, please, we'll join you, if you don't mind. Yeah, good.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think, do we have Nancy, is it okay to have Nancy write that letter?
Something things are happening. I think so, absolutely, she's been in contact with her in the past.
No, yeah, I would, well, it's not gonna hurt.
Yeah. Just that, that we are very interested.
We can establish it again, this by consensus, we don't need to vote on it.
Right, right.
Maybe we can, uh.
Board members, everybody feels the same.
Before she, you know, before she gets too deep into what she's doing, maybe we can get to it.
Right.
Yeah, good idea, very good.
I also have this proposal, um, from Noonan's that the Selectmen done, got in touch with them. Do, does everybody have a copy of this?
Right.
Yeah, I do.
Um, would you play here, would you?
Well, I would like to see it, I would like to see it done, I don't know if we need to do, I don't, I, you're gonna come up tonight, count the polls on my way up and I completely forgot to.
Well, they've got twenty here.
They had twenty polls and they brought it around to the T D Bank North.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if we can find the money, but I'd like to see it happen, I think it would be good for the town.
Yeah, how much was it?
Twenty-six forty.
But then there was a maintenance, the maintenance one too, to.
That's, yeah, it, it's all inclusive.
Okay.
The baskets are thousand forty and the maintenance of the plants is sixteen hundred.
Okay. And if you.
Do they remove them, does it say?
Yes.
That's our issue, when we have things.
Yeah, I know, I won't read saying out there for a while.
They have, make them a call.
We need a new proposal.
Friendly amendment, Bill, friendly amendment, Bill removes them, yeah, if they don't.
You think this is a possibility?
It's his idea.
Uh, what do you think, twenty-six forty to these, beautification of the, think we can handle that?
I, I have some, I'd, I'd love to do it.
Yes.
I'd love to do it.
Yeah, I think it will really make a place up.
I think it's great, Bill.
Do you wanna make a motion, Betty?
I make a motion that we accept the proposal from Noonan's to do the, uh, beautification project downtown, all.
Very good, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you Denise and Nancy.
All Nancy needs to do at this point is to call Steve Noonan.
I will.
And just tell him, it's a, it's a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll look for it.
I think it will.
Very good, and I have, um, do we need to vote on this Nancy, or I just need to sign this?
We need to vote to, um, issue the license.
Okay, um, we have a license here for a retirement party at Beatty, two oh one Washington Street, the June fourteenth, six to ten P M and one detail officer will be on the premises, uh, alcohol will be served. So, do I have a motion that we move forward with this?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with it.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three of us should sign it, Nancy?
Yes, please.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss before your adjournment?
Sure, well, my favorite part of the meeting is the general discussion portion where we can kind of talk about what may be future agenda items. I'd, I'd like to, uh, suggest a couple. Um, I'd love to have an opportunity for the new board, because it's a new board with Bill, to have a meeting, an open session with, um, Chief, uh, Bob Lake, the Fire Chief, just to give us an update on the department and any needs or concerns that he has. This, of course, is not, you know, a contract negotiation or, it's anything but, um, contract negotiation. Any issues that we should be aware of that he may need some help with, some advice on, or wants to update us on, just a, kind of a general state of the union, uh, 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 session with the Fire Chief, just to catch up later.
I think that's a good idea, um.
And at his discretion, whenever he can come in, doesn't have to be the sixteenth, whenever he'd like to come in.
We can't put everything on the sixteenth, we have to grab every local area.
I can.
We can put everything to the sixteenth, we take the rest of the summer.
We could have a lot of parties here going on and on and on.
Yes, we could.
We take the rest of the summer off, we get everything up to the sixteenth.
Denise, you have it.
So, I've spoken with him and he is gathering some documents and some accomplishments to come to a future meeting.
Wonderful.
So, he is working on preparing something that he can present him for.
So, if you, if you happen to be in touch with him, you know, let him know, because, you know, she's watching too.
Why would we not do that? I mean, why are we just saying the Fire Chief?
Why would we not?
No, why are we just saying the Fire Chief, I'm confused, to bring, to.
I think he said because you're new and he's new and.
Yeah, I know, but why wouldn't it be the, the Police Chief too?
Well, it could be, well, you can invite anyone you want to.
We would. Right, right.
Let's do the Fire Chief right now, because we've gone through several months of, you know, contentious debate about anything but the actual department. So, I think we owe it as a courtesy to the Chief, we wanna make sure that we're in partnership with him also to make sure that our fire department is well taken care of.
I think that's a good idea and just to let you both know, I was in touch with Larry Galant, um, and I think you know him, Denise. He said he knew you, he's, when he said Swampscos, you know Denise? And, um, he serves on a Fire, Fire Chief's Commission, I believe.
Essex County Fire Chiefs Association.
Essex, Essex County. And I just wanted to ask him if he would ever have any time to come in and talk with us about what we should be expecting.
He's the president or the chair.
I agree a hundred percent.
You know, what we need to have here, what needs, you know, fire services has, has changed, um, we, are we in compliance with everything that we need to be doing? What, what do we need for equipment?
Yep.
And if you both agree, I.
I agree a hundred percent.
I'm not in, I'm not in agreement to, um, a study because I think it's.
Well, I didn't say, I just thought he would just take his brain.
But I think, I think this is a, this is a great idea, great interim step for us to take someone's brain outside of our town
Yeah.
with a different perspective or.
Absolutely. No, I didn't, I didn't mention the word study with him or, you know, spending any money, I just, just thought he, he seemed to have a lot of knowledge and I thought, well, good, you know what?
I think, I think it also, yeah, yeah.
No.
Maybe.
Knowledge is power.
Maybe when it comes to having him come in, maybe he'll, he'll have a group of ex-firefighters with hired firefighters that can come in and help us.
Determine.
Determine what our Fire Chief needs for a contract or what.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I'd like to see it done outside the town than rather inside the department and I'd like to have it come before us, when we have a packet put in front of us, what is the right thing to do and then come down with a decision after that.
Good.
Well, it, do we have time to have Bob come in on the sixteenth or should we wait till later, two weeks from then?
The problem is, is I don't know how long the gravel hearing is gonna take.
You think that might take a while, Nancy, uh, we don't want, you know, we want people sitting here at night, right?
It could, they have been contentious and, yeah.
No, 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 I think we have enough for the sixteenth, it's, nice problem to have, we'll get things done.
Okay.
Will we have a sixteen?
Well, we're gonna have people come back and sort of tie up.
From the.
Those and your earth removal permit, which could go on, you know, but I had, I had to notify others and you could have people.
Yeah, that, that public hearing, that might, that may be. There may be lots of questions, right?
So, we have those too?
In our regular business, which.
And we have annual appointments coming up.
But don't we have a deadline when we need to, is it the thirtieth, we need a, our deadline with the?
No.
No?
No. Are you talking about a contract?
Yeah.
No, no, the Chief, the Fire Chief does not need a contract.
Okay.
He's allowed a contract.
Okay.
He can work with whatever the Selectmen have set a salary at, which is based on what was appropriated at that town meeting.
Okay. Okay.
It can go.
So, we can, this can ride a little bit.
Right.
The, the next thing that are on the open session, if I can suggest also, um, Finance Director Denise has, um, put together a report regarding the Recreation Committee of Proposals.
Yes, she did.
So, I think sometime in July, we should, you know, look at this. Uh, whenever you can fit it on, fit it in, Nancy, you see some good space. And what I, what I, I'd like to propose is that whenever we do see this, the next time, we're just talking about it and then we wait for the following meeting to actually vote on it, because this is, this is a big issue.
It's a lot of information and, um.
So, that's in response to a proposal they had given you, that they wanted it to take effect July first about the fields and permitting.
Exactly.
So, that was what I wrote up in response to that.
Thank you for that, excellent proof. And the last thing I'm gonna, uh, recommend also, um, based on, um, consensus and, um, approval of, of the Chair, I did put together, I think, four policies, internal management policies on how we operate, how people get things on the agenda. Um, whenever Nancy can roll them out, doesn't have to be the sixteenth, but look, look for those in upcoming meetings. And my goal is to share them with you and to talk to you about them and invite you to also use your pen and edit those policies and then maybe two meetings later, we can actually start putting some policies in place.
So, when are the policies gonna be, come before us?
I'll email them to you for some.
Oh, so someone's already done it?
He, yeah, remember at our last meeting, he said he was gonna.
I would, basically.
Yep, I thought it was gonna be at this meeting.
Well, unfortunately, I forgot.
Okay.
To print them.
We need a policy against that too.
We'll let you go, you have enough on your plate.
And.
And forgive me.
Well, I've been dealing with the land purchases for weeks on end here, so.
Months, years.
Anyway, um, I forgot to print them and he reminded, Joe reminded me when he came in. So, what I'll do is I'll email them to you and you'll have them, Betty, I know you don't like email, I'll mail them to you.
My computer's not even.
I know, I'll mail it to you if, if that will help, if you wanna see them ahead of time to mark up.
Bunch of them. Yeah, would you? If that would be good.
And then I'll put them on the next agenda.
Because we had a policy subcommittee on the school committee and we went through this process. Somebody would write policies and/or, we'd poll them usually off websites from other schools and then we talked about them and then ultimately, as a subcommittee, we'd vote for them and, you know, so we kind of wanna do the same thing, go through a process. But we don't have a policy writing subcommittee, so I'll write them, you write them, Betty writes them, we'll all edit them and then a couple of meetings later, maybe we'll put some of them in, in place.
I have a question, Amy, she, Joe's done. In the town of Groveland, is there a personnel person that, let's just say, um, takes care of personnel? The personnel for the town people that work, like, let's just say Nancy forgot to write something up tonight and they, you know, they need a rep.
Like a community.
Everyone will write me up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, is there anyone, like, that, this, they go to personnel person, uh, um, what's the word?
You mean employee, human resources?
Yeah, no. Human resource person, is there anyone in the town of Groveland that does that?
To a, to a certain extent, I do.
Okay.
But not on myself.
No.
That's up to you, you wanna write me up right?
So, when it comes time to the Highway Department or Department with negotiations, it either comes before us or if there was a complaint, they go to Nancy, type that.
Yeah, under, may I answer, Betty, or do you?
Yeah, yeah.
Our contracts all have grievance procedures in them.
Okay.
And it would come before their supervisor, like your Chief of Police or the Highway Supervisor.
And then they'd come over.
And then if he doesn't settle it at that point, then it would come to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
You, you people are in charge of personnel.
Okay.
In the end, you can't, you can't rely on others to do that type of work for you, you really need to do it yourself, you really do at this point.
Right. We are the body that decides who's hired and who's let go.
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, it happens here.
Okay.
And before it gets here, you kind of hope those things, our difficulties have been ironed out
Yeah, it gets resolved, or, or.
and that we don't have to have that very distasteful job.
But at times, we've had grievances and they've worked out fine, you know, we haven't had grievances in a long time under the contracts. I, you know, it's been quite a while.
I've read the town's bylaws three times over the last year and a half or so and it's always a good read and it's not a lot of volume. But honestly, if you have a chance, uh, anybody in the public, they have an opportunity, go to the website, hook up the bylaws and read them. It's a, it's a good exercise and the grievance process, procedure is very well written and it's in plain language, you can understand exactly how to go through it if, uh, if you, uh, work for the town and you have an issue and it doesn't seem, uh, you know, how, how do you escalate it? It's great, the process, it's, I like it a lot better than the one we have at the school system, I'll say that, it's really well written.
Bill, and I made a copy, I just, I, I wanted to put it into sleeves and so it wouldn't get torn in a little binder of, um, an old Selectmen's manual, they don't print them anymore, it came from Mass Municipal. Bill, and I made a copy, I just, I wanted to put it into sleeves and so it wouldn't get torn in a little binder, of um, an old Selectmen's manual, they don't print them anymore, it came from Mass Municipal, and I made a copy for you and Joe. It, you know, it gives you a lot of information as to what your role as a Selectman is.
It is, it's good, and I was reading this, just recently, Nancy.
Yeah, I, I didn't mention Betty, cause I told her she had one of the.
Shoo, nineteen ninety-eight, that's a, that's the last one they put together.
It really hasn't changed as far as your role, you know, that's why I took the time to make the copies, and I'll, I'll get it together for you.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
And I think it'll help you if you read it, you know, at your leisure, so.
Thank you for the open session, Betty, um, thank you, Bill, and that, those are the three things, and uh, yeah, that's my favorite part of the meeting, an open spot where we can express things.
And that will stay on the agenda, so any of you want something, just bring it up at that time, that isn't a specific agenda item, you know, relative to somebody.
This is good information, too, about parks, commissions, land, authority, it's, you know, it's important, I believe, that the Board of Selectmen are well versed on this. We don't wanna give up anything that's of value to the community, and um, you know, as long as you have reasonable people sitting here, I'm sure the best thing will happen for, for everyone. You know, I don't think there's anything that we don't see that we can't work out, and even if we disagree on things, you know. It's still, it's good to work to each o- with each other, and bring it, bring it out here.
Um, I'm glad you mentioned that, just in the interest of time, we'll wrap it up, but uh, one of the policies that I wrote, I didn't really write it, I borrowed most of it from the school committee, there's a public, um, comment portion embedded in every school committee meeting. I'll tell you, if we can get people into the habit of coming here, just like we're doing here, and say, by the way, I have a concern, could I have an opportunity to bring this at a meeting in the future? Cause right now, when people want things on the agenda, they call Betty, they call Bill, there's no.
And you try to tell them, they have, they, why don't you come down and listen to us and.
Yeah, exactly, so if every meeting, there's a fifty-minute piece where people can come in from the outside and just talk to us.
I think part of, I think part of the problem is, is I know people will not come in, because if it's a complaint, they don't wanna have someone against them, or, it's not that they're trying to hide behind something, they're just not comfortable coming in and complaining in front of a camera and.
I think you can tell anything, as long as you're respectful.
No, I understand, but yeah, I agree with what you're saying, but I'm saying if someone came in with a complaint.
But you really do. Yeah, I, I think people get apprehensive about that, but, you know, if they see that happening, maybe they'll.
Right, so they. That's why they kind of come behind the scenes to the Selectmen and the Nancy over.
So that policy is written very clearly, that before the public portion, the public comment portion is, before anybody gets up to the mic and says anything, we read the policy, and we remind them.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Remind yourselves of what it says.
What they, what they can, what they cannot say, they can't talk about somebody else if they're not present, so, it's very well done, I lived with that process for six years and it worked, every meeting, there was a public, um, comment.
Comment.
And if we have it here, that's, that's what I mean, write policies, but we don't have a bylaw that does that, we need policies to make things work. So, thank you for that, it's gonna be an exciting project, see these policies come out.
Bill, just so you know, people, someone coming because they're, they don't wanna come publicly to one Selectmen.
Yeah.
Then you, you hear it, you get the headache, but you can't do anything about it, because, because unless they're gonna back it up, it's hearsay, you know, so.
I, that's exactly, right. Yeah, I, exactly, right, exactly.
That's what you have to explain to people, but, yeah.
And I've done it, but unfortunately, they want me to bring the complaints to the town, and, and, and I never expected this, I didn't, you know, and, and it's like, wow.
Welcome.
I don't know how I can do it if it's just hearsay, you know, I have to have proof, yeah.
Right, but you can't, yeah, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you all.
Well done, thank you all, all right, Denise?